Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome to the December seventeenth, 2024 City of Wyndham Council meeting. Tonight, under the consent agenda are the minutes from the following. Council minutes, December third, 2024. Community Center Commission, December ninth. EDA, December ninth. Library Board, December tenth. Park and Rec, November thirteenth. Planning and zoning, December tenth. Telecom Commission meeting was November eighteenth. Utility Commission, November twenty-seventh. Also included are the following license permits and applications. Annual cigarette license renewal for Family Dollar. Exempt gambling permit for Bark and exempt gambling permit for the Wyndham Fire Relief Association. Also included are the regular bills. Council have any questions?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
That motion made by Jenny and seconded by Scott to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Next, department heads.
Kari Hansen, Department is Director of the Library. Just wanted to give a few little updates. We are participating in the Christmas by candlelight on Thursday night, so we'll be open until seven. We have, we'll have games and a craft for the kids and a little treat that they can take home. We have been doing Storytime on KDOM, and it was KDOM's idea, and I think it's been very well received. Nancy is actually going back tomorrow. They asked her to do a longer book that they're gonna run on Christmas Eve. So she's pretty excited about that. And then we start our adult winter reading program on January second. So lots of fun things going on.
Any questions for Kari? Lots going on. Good to hear it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Tiffany, I believe.
Hello.
Are you going to Bud Road?
Yes.
Okay, hold on just a second. We're gonna let Jenny, one other item under Department Heads. Go ahead.
Okay, so as part of the Liquor Store Commission, our liquor store manager, John Nelson, was not able to be here tonight, but I wanted to make the announcement. We are going to be observing winter hours at River Ben Liquor starting January second through March thirty-first, which then it closes one hour early. So Monday through Thursday, the schedule would be ten a.m. to eight p.m. Fridays and Saturdays, ten a.m. to nine p.m. And Sundays, eleven a.m. to four p.m. We did this last year, and we didn't have any complaints. So we're gonna do that again this year with the one-hour closing early, January second through March thirty-first.
Any other Department Heads at the table up here? Okay, thanks for that, Jenny. All right, next item. This is in regards to the residential tax abatement. This will be our hearing. Excuse me. Tiffany, explanation.
Absolutely. Tiffany Lamb, EDA Director. At our previous meeting on December third, we had adopted a resolution calling for a public hearing for today's date at today's time. That's related to a Cottonwood County Home Initiative application for tax abatement at nineteen forty-six Bud Road.
Very good. At this time, we are gonna open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the tax abatement, now is your chance to speak. Any other comments whatsoever from the public? I'll ask staff, have you received any written or verbal?
We have not received any written or verbal comments about the proposed tax abatement.
Thank you, and one final time for public comment. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. You're back on.
And then the second requested action tonight is adopting the attached resolution approving the tax abatement for said home at nineteen forty-six Bud Road.
If the council doesn't have any questions, I'd entertain someone to introduce that resolution.
I want to introduce a resolution approving that tax abatement for nineteen forty-six Bud Road.
Resolution introduced by Marv. Did I hear a second? Oh, second Jim? Okay, second by Jim. Any discussion from council or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call. Steve?
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Grunig.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
And that carries. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Find some more of them. Okay, we move on to the city budget, item number four, twenty twenty-five levy resolution. And Steve, the question I had though is with the, I guess that'll stand alone. The budget amendments don't have to be done prior to any of that.
No, the budget amendments will be for the twenty-four budget. This will be adopting the twenty-five budget.
Okay, city budget. This resolution is on the table. Last meeting, we went through pretty much in its entirety under the topic headings of that budget. And I do not think that we had any changes to the budget. Does council have any questions? Council have any questions for Steve particularly? And I do believe that it is in order, and you have a resolution approving the,
the resolution is for approving the property tax levy for twenty twenty-four payable in twenty twenty-five to support the impending budget that you reviewed and had the public input on at the last meeting.
Thank you for that clarification, Steve. Council wish to take action?
I'll make a motion to accept that. Introduce resolution to accept the budget.
For twenty twenty-five? Twenty, yep, twenty-four budget, twenty twenty-four levy collectible in twenty-five.
That, that right there, yes. Thank you.
I'll second.
That was introduced. I'll get that right by Scott and then seconded by Jim. Council have any other questions or clarifications? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call. Steve?
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
And then that is, that is four point seven one percent levy increase over the prior property tax levy, which is slightly under the four point eight preliminary that was set earlier this year.
And calculated out, we have a continued lower tax rate because of that. Now we have the twenty twenty-five Wyndham City Budget. And that is not a resolution. This will be the final adoption. Steve, did you have any briefing on this?
Not really. We went through that fairly extensively at the last meeting. The council did not have any changes following the public input on that. So the budget pack that was in the book the last time was included in your packets again this time, but that is the final proposed budget for the council for this action. And that would be approved by motion if you so choose.
And no changes, as I understand that, correct? Okay, with no changes, councils went through this several times. Council have any final questions on the budget? Does the council wish to take action?
I'd make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five budget.
I'll second.
A motion by Marv Grunig to approve the twenty twenty-five budget and seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Twenty twenty-five budget is set. Now we look at the twenty twenty-four budget amendments. There is a handout, I believe. Everybody has a handout. Steve, are you gonna make any comments on that?
Donna's here as well. We do this annually. We look back and see if there's anything that was, you know, kind of material change. Just going through them, we had some additional building permit revenue because of the flood. We had a lot more building permits issued, so some of that is in here. We did accept the, we had some more of the deed money come through for that state appropriation for the apartment building completion, so that came through last year, so we needed to add that. There was a donation for Tegos Park for that sidewalk project from a Mr. White, so we included that. We had retirement, two retirement payouts, one in the arena and one in the city office. Our pool admission, pool instruction, and pool concessions were down in revenue because we did not have a pool season due to said flood. So we adjusted those. We also did get the Semstone grant completed. The demolition was completed on that site, so that was a reimbursement grant, so those dollars are coming back to the city. So that was an increase in the amount of state aid. We had some Semstone expenses, again, that came through in twenty twenty-five that are offset by that grant. We had snow plows. We ordered those trucks. Those all came in. The plows came in. Once we received all the equipment, we had a bit of a cost dispute with that vendor for the equipment. I think the street committee has talked about that. Our snow plows came in. They were not seventy-eight thousand for all three. They were seventy-eight thousand a piece. So that left us with a bit of a hole. And so we've, I've talked to John. We kind of worked out a bit of a plan to have that covered within the street budget. They've got twenty-eight thousand five hundred in their equipment fund from this year. We had that sale of the truck to Westbrook for twenty-six thousand. We've got some equipment reserved this year. They've had a good year in the street department. As far as some of the fuel costs were lower, some of that stuff, so we've got some operational dollars. We're gonna recapture there. And then we also have some reimbursement coming back. The crew's been working at taking out ash trees, and we got a state grant to help reimburse us for some of that, so we're gonna direct some of those dollars over into that to help cover that deficit. So we've got it paid for, but that was a kind of a wild situation, so. And then I can, I'll let John maybe talk about it after I get through these. Then we had flood expenses, which those are gonna be FEMA reimbursable, but we have to front those dollars. Then we had our Revolve Labs project. That was that data center. They gave us two hundred thousand dollar deposit. That will be going back to them, but that's a significant amount of money. We wanted to account for it in our budget because it is material. And then we had some, the electrical capital outlay. We finished our generation building, so a lot of those dollars went through. We had some that went through last year, some that went through this year, so we made the appropriate budget change on that. And then the last one is that other retirement payout, so. So those are the items in the budget adjustment. We came out actually pretty good shape. You can see in the last page of it, there was nine million dollars before. There was an adjustment of nine, and the difference is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand when everything goes in and out, because we had monies coming in, we had monies going out, and it all just kind of matched. So there wasn't a huge budget change at the end, but we wanted to make sure for the auditors and everything and your benefit that we had everything lined up as best we could have it, so. I guess if you have any questions on the budget amendments, I can answer them. John, I can answer them. And if you have questions on the snowplow, snafu, you can talk to John.
Marv?
Do you expect FEMA money this year yet?
Hopefully, we cross our fingers. Donna and I were on the grants portal today, and there was the first classification. Essentially, a lot of that is the dollars that go to the Cottonwood County landfill for that transfer station. We owe the county about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That project got pushed through today. Our FEMA person got everything entered. Donna and I went and looked at it today. We submitted it, so we're hoping that can turn. Just how quick the feds are reimbursing that, if it's like some of the individual assistance checks, yeah, then it's gonna come before the end of the year, but other times FEMA dollars have been pushed off. So I realistically expect the bulk of them in next calendar year.
Other questions? I'm, I'm not critiquing anyone on the truck. Miscalculations of, but that seems like a significant amount. Is there something in place that we need to look at different? Or, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really critiquing you, John. You don't have to come up and.
Calling me, I hear you, boss.
I'm just curious on what they provided and how it was misunderstood.
Well, we all kind of shook out as the last guy left, and everything was kind of all set up. And it was the snafu between Boyer and everything and push back and forth for not getting it built through the COVID times and everything. And when we started getting the TBI stuff done after the other trucks were all done, I must have missed something in there, and I thought it was just the one. So like Steve said and everything, with what we got going on, truck sales and everything else, we can make up for with what I got in my budget and everything too, so we should be able to take care of it. Because they did have that trade-in. The store and truck was sold, and there's some other equipment sold and everything too. So it was kind of my fault and fiscally responsible. I tried to do the best work with Steve and figure out what we can do to save you guys some headaches too.
I think that the resolution on that was adequately, adequately handled, so thank you for that. And thanks for coming up and explaining it.
I have no problem. Hopefully, I explained it pretty good.
Between the two of ya, yes, and it all matched. Thank you, John. Okay. Smart goals? Are we up to that?
If you'd make a motion approving the budget amendments, and we can move on to smart goals.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four budget amendments.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Jenny. Any discussion? All in favor of the passing the twenty twenty-four budget amendments signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that carries. Now we'll move on to smart goals.
Yep, the first thing in the packet is the kind of dashboard report on what the twenty twenty-four goals. Those are on the left. And then the scale where they completed, seventy-five percent done, fifty percent done, twenty-five or eliminated, and then some comments on the side. So those are all included for your review. You can see there's a number of them that got done. There's some that got eliminated, and, you know, floods slowed us down in a few of them, but I think overall, pretty good progress was made on these goals. The twenty twenty-five goals are in the packet. I tried to get them in alphabetically, so, by department, so those are in there. So these did go through the Department Heads and the boards and commissions that they work with. I guess if you have any questions of them, I'll try to answer them to my best of my ability, or if the Department Heads here, they can answer.
Council have any specific questions? I know that there was a couple of departments that not much changed over the year because we were missing Department Heads in some situations, so that'll be a carryover. And, but I know they have discussed them and how to move that process forward, so that was good to hear. Anything else from the council? Otherwise, we usually do an acceptance of the smart goals.
I'll make a motion to accept it. Smart goals for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Marv to approve the smart goals as presented to the council. And before we take the vote, well, we can vote first. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that carries. Thank you to all the commissions and committees that worked on that. It's always interesting to read these and picking out certain items that maybe one or two council members worked on and brought to the committees as ideas, and they were receptive to that. So that's where the exchange comes a lot, I think, between the council members and some of the committees. So I think that's all good stuff. So with that, we are down to a mayor appointment. As in the packet, there was a brief explanation on this. We have been short one member. We had it temporarily filled this summer. And in discussion with, that I've had with the many members of the hospital board and the candidate himself, being our retiring council member, Marv Grunig. And this will not be effective until it's a condition on that to be effective on January one. So, but I do highly recommend Marv Grunig. He's been on the, as a liaison for many years with the hospital board. Now comes a more in-depth part of that if the council puts him on the hospital board. I think it's probably one of my most proud appointments that I'll make. Because Marv's deserving of it, and he's looking out for the city, and he's looking out for the hospital. And I, there's not any hesitation in my mind that he's gonna be fair in both ways. And he even came to me before accepting this, and I'll explain this, because he worried about the public perception. The hospital board reached out and talked about it. They said, "We have no problem with Mr. Grunig." So with that, my recommendation stands to appoint Marv Grunig, and that will be through the unexpired term of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
I would make the motion to appoint Marv Grunig to the hospital board effective January.
I'll second.
Motion by Jenny and seconded by Jim. Last chance, Marv. Let's vote before he says anything. Yeah, he'll do very well. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I would abstain.
Yeah, unanimously accept himself. Okay, very good. Good point. Okay, street closure. This is for the Wyndham Chamber Light Parade, Christmas by candlelight around the square, right? And I don't see, I can't read the dates.
It's on Third Avenue from Twelfth Street to Ninth Street. And Ninth Street between Third and Fourth Avenue.
Thank you. Council want to take action on the street closure? Santa will be there.
I'll make a motion for the street closure for the Wyndham Light Parade for Christmas candlelight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Dennis to approve the street closure as described in the streets affiliated with that. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And that carries. Number eight. Personnel met last week and had a discussion with the chief. Had a very good discussion of understanding of a new records management plan that's being discussed by the county. After that discussion, a letter was drafted. That was in the packet. This is an FYI for the, for the council is what this is. And we have, it was a very good discussion that we had. We hope that this entertains the county to have a discussion. I do not know if they have. I think Steve was at the meeting today at the Cottonwood County Building at the courthouse. And so with that, does any of the council members have any comments they'd like to make? I will, I'll recognize, but not allowing to speak anybody in the public, but we do have the county attorney in the audience that I'll recognize. Questions?
Just one thing, just I guess so the council is aware or whatever is, with the new records management system that was proposed by the county, the way this affects us is it would affect our Wyndham PD as far as work and input that they may need to do. And so we were just looking at budgeting-wise. The chief was saying this may require additional staff or additional time. It may also require overtime for all the PD to be trained. And so we were just looking at, the information of this came to us kind of late in the year after our budget was set. If, you know, we would have known of this earlier in the year, we could have budgeted more appropriately or staffing or those kind of things. And so this is something that's being looked at. I don't know. I wasn't at the commissioners' meeting to know where things are at there. So we're just, I think there's some kind of,
Demo.
Demo that's happening in January. And then I would guess we'll get some feedback from that, because the chief will have to let us know what kind of staff time or if we're gonna have to look at having additional staff. So that was the big thing, is just letting the council know that we may have to adjust budgets or figure out where we go depending on. So it's kind of like, it's not coming from us as a council saying we need to do this. It's coming from the county that there could be a change, but it affects our PD, so it may affect our budget and our staffing. So that's why we just are involved.
And also the complexity, as I understand it, of what our police department's gonna have to do to switch and the training that goes with it for not only ours, I would guess, but the way I understood it, it would be the other, it's not just Wyndham. I mean, that's the other local PDs. Westbrook and Mountain Lake would be probably the two. And then, of course, the sheriff's office. And so, I mean, this is, it's a recommendation from the Cottonwood County Attorney. We understand that. We just have other items here dealing with cost especially. And we, as a committee, discussed things like, why do we have to change something that's not broken? In my opinion, and a lot of extra time that. And a lot of extra time that we'll have to do to potentially duplicate things is our understanding. But this is being discussed at a different level than our council. Like Jenny says, this has to be made aware because of cost considerations that we may have to do to hire additional help. And the updates are the change to a new system, all of that, that's incorporated in that, that at this time, we don't know. Fair enough? Okay. Jim have something?
Is this something that the county has decided or the county attorney has decided?
It's, this is a, the county attorney is appointed and considered an elected official. And so, you know, this goes through then, the authority the county has is to budget for this equipment. But it's ultimately, I mean, it's the county attorney's requesting this. So I mean, we, it's, it's being put on us. We're just not, the committee was not happy with the way it's being rolled out. I do not want to, I, thank you for saying that. And I don't want it to be a debate because our police chief's in the back. We don't, this is not for an argument's sake.
Correct. I said I could offer the answers. If the board has, or if the council had questions, I would answer your questions.
But No, that'll be the council motion if they will suspend the rules, not the chair or the mayor. That's up to the council.
My, I guess my thought, there is the demo that's supposed to happen in January. And so I would like to see that Wyndham PD send a representative or two to the, to do the demo. I believe the sheriff's office has representatives coming to see the demo. And then, and I'm not sure who from PD is doing that, but I would like to see them, and then they report back to our personnel committee as far as what they're getting out of the demo, what they're saying. I think, you know, there's more information that we need to gather and know. But I don't, I think it's the PD that's going to have to sit in on that demo and see what all the information is, and then come back to us. And then if we have further follow-up, that's when we could reach out to the county attorney for more information. But I think people need to see the demo first, and then we need to make a decision from there, ask for more clarification.
A question I have too for the personnel committee, which I'm still on till the end of the year. If you wanted to meet with the county attorney to get the answers, I think that may be another option for you to consider. And that is, that would have to do with the current chair of our committee is Marv Grunig, if he so wishes, you know, to do that.
I think all this information has to come through our PD to get to us correctly, not come to us first and go to the PD. So I would hesitate on saying yes or no tonight, but we can leave that window open to have that discussion.
Is that fair with the council? No action. Okay, we'll leave it. That, that is closed on that topic. We have a couple resolutions of appreciation. I am going to read the first resolution. If that would be introduced, I would be happy to read that first one.
I'll introduce a resolution for the mayor to read.
I'll second.
A motion made of introducing this resolution was made by Scott and seconded by Jenny, and I will read it as follows. A resolution expressing sincere appreciation to Marv Grunig for eight years of faithful service to the city of Wyndham. Whereas the city of Wyndham wishes to express grateful recognition to Marv Grunig for outstanding public service faithfully rendered to the city of Wyndham as council member from January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2024. And whereas the city also wishes to express recognition of his splendid abilities, of his time, unselfish efforts, and whereas Marv Grunig has rendered faithful and efficient service to this community as a public official and leader of civic affairs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota as follows, that this city council on behalf of its members, the city officials and employees of the city of Wyndham and the citizens of this community extends to Marv Grunig its humble expressions of esteem for serving the city well and its best wishes for good health, success, and prosperity. That a copy of this resolution be spread on the official minutes of the city council of the city of Wyndham and a copy presented to Marv Grunig adopted the 17th day of December, 2024, and is signed by Mayor Dominic Jones. Roll call.
Nelson.
Yep.
Grunig.
Epstein.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
And that carries even unanimously, even if you abstain.
I just wanted to thank the citizens of Wyndham for giving me the opportunity to serve on this council for the eight years. I guess the quote is, "There's no greater challenge, and there's no greater honor than to be in public service." So I want to also congratulate the mayor on his years of service as he leaves the council also. It's a job well done, to say the least. I also want to thank the cities, department heads and employees for doing their part in what makes Wyndham a great place to live in. And especially to Mr. Nasby for pulling this all together so the council can function effectively week after week. So thank you all onto different things, I guess.
So Dennis, I'm not going to be able to read the next one.
Yeah, I guess I'll
Turn your mic on.
Sorry about that. I'll introduce this resolution of appreciation to Dominic for his service.
Can I second the resolution then?
Yeah. And I've got the resolution in front of me, so I will read it. A resolution expressing sincere appreciation to Dominic Jones for 14 years of faithful service to the city of Wyndham. Whereas the city of Wyndham wishes to express grateful recognition to Dominic Jones for outstanding public service faithfully rendered to the city of Wyndham as a city council member from January 1, 2011 to December 31st, 2016, and mayor from January 1, 2017 through December 31st, 2024. And whereas the city also wishes to express recognition of his splendid abilities and of his time and unselfish efforts. And whereas Dominic Jones has rendered faithful and efficient service to this community as a public official and leader of civic affairs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota as follows, that this city council on behalf of its members, the city officials and the employees of the city of Wyndham and the citizens of the community extended Dominic Jones its humble expression of esteem for service of the city well and its best wishes for good health, success, and prosperity. That a copy of this resolution be spread on the official minutes of the city council of the city of Wyndham and a copy presented to Dominic Jones adopted the 17th day of December, 2024. And this is signed by me as councilman at large. And here you go. Thank you.
Yes. Benson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Al.
Esplin. Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
So I want to recognize, because I just seen her standing in the back of the council chambers, is my wife. And one of the things that gets you through lots of different situations as an elected official is your spouse or spouse or significant other. And, you know, the friends, fellow council members, staff, department heads, all of, all of your employees in each department, you know, become like family. And I'm so happy my wife is here. That's my family. Along with our kids and grandkids and extended families. That's why we do what we do. Right? So I am just, I'm very proud of the city of Wyndham for everything that's been accomplished, whether it be with me at the helm or new people at the helm. It's all going to be good. So in that, I once again thank you to many, many friends that I've made over this hall. I appreciate that. And thank you, Steve. Marv said it already once, but you're one heck of a city administrator, top-notch in the state of Minnesota. New business?
Hold on, one more.
I have a question, Dominic. Dominic?
Is it about fishing?
I was going to say, now, as long as we're all family, can I ask her where your hunting, where your fishing holes are at?
No. You can ask, but thank you.
Just one word, Dominic, as a new member coming on, it's a privilege to share this bench with you up here. It really does mean a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
New business, any old business? Council comments? Scott, you can go first for that.
Okay. With all that we've had around here, we are maybe a dysfunctional family, but we are a family here in Wyndham. We, we do, we share the good times, we share the bad times, the hard times, and everything in between. That's what makes us Wyndham people, Wyndham people. And with that, I want to say, you know, like I always do, check on your neighbors, take care of each other with the Christmas season and the holidays coming up. If you know somebody that's alone, maybe take a plate of food over to them or a little box of goodies and just check on them. Check on your neighbors, check on your fellow Wyndham people. Because we do care about each other, and we do love each other around here. And if they haven't had their sidewalks scooped off, do them a favor, go scoop it. I mean, that's what makes Wyndham Wyndham. We do care for each other, and we do take care of each other through the hard times, the good times, and the tough times. Thank you very much. Have a Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Scott. Jenny?
I just want to thank the city employees and the committees that worked on our detailed SMART goals. I don't know that everybody is into those as I am, but I like to see things listed out, and I like a checklist, and I like, it does me good. And when I get to see that dashboard and see the things that are completed, and, you know, that's the kind of thing I like. So I appreciate that and the work that goes into that. Then also to thank Marv for all his years. I know when I came on the board, it was, you know, anything that was electric-related, we always just looked at Marv, and I don't know who we're going to look at for those kind of things. And so just, you're really going to be missed with your knowledge of the city and having worked for the city for so long as well, that that will greatly be missed here. And then Dominic, like I told you, I said, I thought we should have maybe roasted the mayor at the end because I don't like when people get teary-eyed or anything, you know, because I'm always the one to cry at council meetings. So I won't roast you too much or anything because, like I said, I didn't have it planned. But I do want to just say that I appreciate, you know, all your years that you've put in, all the knowledge and all the connections that you've had to help the city to grow. And also that you, I figure you will know pretty much what meetings I always make treats for. And as a public member, you'll probably come to those meetings in the future just for my baking. And also so that you know that when you come in as a public member to speak, you will be limited to three minutes.
Good job. Jim?
I just have to echo what both Scott and Jenny said. If you see that red pickup behind you somewhere, it might be me, so.
I guess I would just, although it's just a little bit early, I would wish good luck to the new council and our new mayor back there in the coming years ahead, so.
Yeah, I just, Dominic, you've done a wonderful job as mayor, and I, I've, I've really learned a lot of respect for you, so. Hopefully we can go forward as friends. And, and I know Marv for a long time, and we've, we've worked together all along, since I moved to Wyndham in 85, I think.
You went fishing together, if you remember.
Yeah, we probably did, yeah. Yeah, and, and then I'd just like to, being at, this is the last meeting of the year. I'd just like to bring up the flood and all the people that did so much work for the flood. I guess I can single one person out, and that'd be Hillary, our new mayor. She did a fantastic job on, on, on the flood. There's a way, there's people from out of town and in town, and it's, it's hard not to get emotional when you think about what took place in this flood. I just had to bring that up, so, thank you.
Mr. Nasby?
I'll be brief, I'll show you how to do it. Thank you, Dominic, for everything that you've done for us the last 14 years as councilman mayor, that we have very much appreciated the support of you and the whole council, all the department heads. Appreciate council's support in backing us up and working with us as we work with the boards, commissions, and citizens to move the city forward. Marv, thank you for everything. You taught me quite a bit about the elective industry. I've really enjoyed being on the compass board, and you started me down that path, so I sincerely thank you for that and wish you both very well in your next endeavors. Hopefully we will see you around. And Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Steve. And you guys thought we were going to be done early, didn't you? Well, we are going to be, because I'm not going to say too much more tonight. People know how I feel. That's one thing that I have always prided myself on. I'll tell it like it is. That's one thing that I have always prided myself on. I'll tell it like it is, whether you like it or not. And that's the way I act. And to all our, our, our family of coworkers and the city staff, it's been great to work with you. Even the media at times has been good to work with. Not only Ron, but Katie Wem as well. We thank them too and hope they continue that process and good working relationship with the city of Wyndham. To our new council members and mayor, I wish you the best of luck. It's a special community. And you'll be great leaders. I appreciate that. And God bless Wyndham. We're adjourned by unanimous consent.